WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
This Fintress County Board of Commissioners is called to order. Please arise for the presentation of colors by the Clark Range High School Color Guard, followed by the pledge to the flag by First District Commissioner Justin Miller, and our opening prayer by Fifth District Commissioner Wade Matthews.
Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors of verse, march. Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Order of colors. Order of arms. Color.
Bow your heads please. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you in prayer tonight, Lord, and Lord, we just ask you to put your hand on this commission, Lord, and just give us wisdom to make the best decisions for our county, Lord. Lord, just bless the citizens that's come out tonight, Lord, that care enough about their county, Lord, to be here. And just thank you for Fintress County, Lord, just help us to be a good light to the counties around us, Lord, and the other counties in the state, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
We'll have the roll call by Marilyn Stevens, our county court clerk.
Jimmy Johnson.
Here.
Justin Miller.
Here.
J.P. Reagan.
Here.
Jim Ferguson.
Here.
Ben Hughes.
Here.
Donald Williams.
Here.
Mr. Denny. Joe Green.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
Wade Matthews.
Here.
Nine present, one absent, we do have a quorum. First thing on our agenda is approval of the minutes from September the 18th, 2017. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes?
I was so moved.
We have a motion to pass, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion carries. Next is approval of notaries. We have one notary candidate this month, that's Charles Edward Jordan. I entertain a motion for what to do with that?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a memo from the Fintress County Highway Department regarding TDOT's local bridge projects. Everybody had a chance to look over that? Is this a meaning in his budget, Marcia?
No. I'm not real sure. I think my could ask, did you guys bring him to business later?
Do we have to?
Clarify something, I'm not sure.
Is it just their match is going down?
Right, it's just to let them know that the funds from the Improve Act actually helped and it lowered the cost of the.
So it's just for information? Just for information only and. Okay, next is Fintress County Tourism Update. LeAnn Smith, Chamber of Commerce Director, LeAnn, please.
Okay, thanks for having me this evening, everybody. I've got some handouts circulating and anybody in the audience as well, if you'd like a copy of this product, it's in regards to Fintress County travel in 2016. And these were just passed on, these numbers, to us by the state of Tennessee. So, as you all can see there, the revenue generated from tourism in Fintress County was $12.48 million in 2016. And so, we were pleased with these numbers, it was an increase from 2015. However, we'd like to see those higher. So we've got some plans in the works, and I've discussed those with some of you folks in the past, but we've got some new marketing materials coming out. Some of the things that we are working on is a new tourism map, and that'll be paid for completely with grant funding. So, I guess the key here to citizens in Fintress County in regards to our tourism revenue is that because of tourism revenue in Fintress County, $220 is what's saved annually by the taxpayer. So, I think we can all agree that's good. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you know what it was in 2015?
I do. We actually increased $50,000. So, in 2015, it was $12.43 million, and that's not, that's not a typical increase for us. We usually increase more, and I was a little bit concerned about not having a higher increase. However, I attended last week the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and it was explained 92 of the 95 counties increased in tourism revenue. However, 45 of those counties increased by less than 2%. So, it's when you become a destination, and not specifically to say Fintress County, but when the state becomes a destination, you kind of plateau at a number. So we want to think creatively, do different things to get those numbers to keep going up. And I think the state has some good things in the work too, works too. And for the record, the tax amount saved in 2015 was $177. Of course, you can see the jobs generated as well as 90. So this is a, tourism is a very important industry in Fintress County, a very valid one. And we have such renewable resources with our tourism industry, with history and with our natural resources, that God just kind of handed us, so we need to take advantage of that.
All right, LeAnn, Mike, are y'all still gonna shift or focus on the equestrian market? Or are we gonna start looking more at maybe motorcycle traffic or?
I'm very interested in adventure tourism, and that really encompasses everything. It encompasses, because we have more to offer than just one niche of tourism. And while it's valid that equine brings so much revenue in the community, I mean, you can see it on the weekends, I know you live down towards Xena, then you see the trailers just coming in, but likewise, you see the motorcycles as well. So, we again have to think creatively and utilize all of our, all of our marketing tools and all of our tourism resources to bring those together. That's one of the things I really hope that our tourism map does. Now, we need, we're in need of a hard map too, just to guide citizens around the community, so this will work as double duty. But the, this will also feature all of these special, unique tourism sites, not just our attractions, but also businesses that specialize in tourism. So I really hope for our chamber membership, this is a good bit of exposure for them, as well as the industry as well.
Sounds exciting, looking forward to it.
Yeah, I think the marketability of Fintress County is right now at a peak level, and we need to take advantage of it, so that's, that's a really good thing.
And I'll mention a unique thing that the state is rolling out in 2018 is a music trail. Now, we might not be right on the music trail, but they are tying all of these different music assets, and we have a lot of those. And not just the current talent in the community, but some of the past talents that have come from Fintress County, so that'll be really interesting to see. You know, and in regards to what we're doing out back on the courthouse, we plan on developing a walking tour associated with downtown. So hopefully that'll get more people circulating and tell our story a little bit better.
Thank you, LeAnn. Anybody else have another question for LeAnn? And LeAnn, please stay up here if you would. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of Tanisha Key to the Joint Economic and Community Development Board to fill the education seat, and she has just been promoted to?
She is now the new director at the Fintress County Road Safety Branch, so we're excited to have Tanisha on board to get some fresh energy in there and to grow that facility and empower education in our community. Of course, we had a vacancy in the education category for the JCDV, and I'd like to recommend her to fulfill that.
So at this point in time, we need approval to put Tanisha Key on the JCDV board.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Motion passes, and LeAnn, I think you've got something new for the county?
I'm sorry, I have all this stuff tonight. I took a week of vacation last week and all of these things happened, so it's all good things, of course. And if you'll entertain me for just one other moment, we have just received the Governor's Three Star Award for Fintress County, so we have some new signage to go up, and I'd love for you all to have your picture made with this tonight, if you can. If you'll just allow me this, just so people understand, I know you all understand, no, Larry, you can't stand behind the sign, but I know you all understand what Three Star does for this community, but I would like just the audience and anybody listening to know, while we participate in this program, and I'm just gonna, I can't say it any better than just reading it to you, but participating counties and the cities that are within these counties will be eligible for a 4% discount for eligible projects on both the business development and community development ability to pay calculation. So that's the matches that we have to put forth for our CDBG grants, as well as our Fast Track grants. And you know, for a rural community, you know, that I don't particularly think we struggle to meet ends, but we do need all of the resources to come together that we can. This is really helpful at the end of the day for our community. So, that and additionally, only the cities and the counties that are active participants in the Three Star program are eligible to participate in the other Tennessee Economic Development, Rural and Community Development programs. You know, that includes programs like the Tennessee Downtown Program that we participate in, the Asset-Based Planning Grant that I just received, we wouldn't be able to participate in that if it weren't for Three Star. So, so those are the reasons why we do that, and.
So it's time to take a photo walk?
Yes, yes it is.
Can you get through there?
Did everybody out here?
I'm just gonna sit here. This guy, who's our HR person, I need to file a blank.
Alrighty. Number 11, consideration of approval of the Economic and Community Development Room Use Procedures. Last month, we had some questions about that, you'll find that in your packets, some rules or a policy for our ECD room. Leslie, do you want to address that?
Just real briefly, Mike, those are adopted from some other counties, we did not reinvent the wheel. It says that we don't discriminate against anyone who would like to use the ECD room and their causes or their venues, however, we don't advocate or we don't adopt the views of anybody who uses it. It also goes on to say that we'd like to limit any organizations used to one time a month, once every 30 days, so that we can leave some open dates on the calendar, and as, we don't want anybody to hog the room, so to speak. And then it also goes on to say that if you make a mess, clean it up, or we'll charge you $30. And I think that's pretty reasonable and in line. I think Knox Counties was like a $50 fee for making a mess, but very basic, very simple, and it just outlines. It also says that if you use the ECD room and you charge a fee for your services, we ask that nobody who's indigent be excluded from the use of that simply because it is a public building. I think those are pretty in line with federal government standards, as well as other counties.
And if you all agree with that, but I'll entertain a motion to adopt that as a procedure.
So moved.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Next, number 12, consideration of appointment of E911 Board Members with Terms Expiring October 2017. We have three members whose terms are ending. Hollis Crabtree has requested not to be put back on that board again, so I'm nominating Joe McGrogan, who is our Rescue Squad Captain for the county, to make his replacement. Of course, James Bilbury, our 911, or, excuse me, our EMA Director, his term is up, but obviously, his position, he needs to be on the 911 board, so I'm renominating James to the same position. And then, Mr. Gary Peters, who's, who just recently retired as ambulance director, his term of service is up, and we appreciate his service to the 911 board. And I'm nominating Lori Cooper, the Fire Chief, who had 27 years of experience on the fire departments and very knowledgeable with all the things that go on with 911 and what they need. So, these three gentlemen bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to the table, so those are, those are my nominees for 911 board. You can take them one at a time, or take the group as a whole, however you want to do it.
I make a motion to appoint the group as a whole.
Okay, I have a motion to appoint the group, do I have a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jim. Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Pass.
Wade.
Four.
Eight four one, pass one absent.
Motion passes. Appreciate that. Number 13, consideration approval to apply for the courthouse courtroom security grant. Leslie, you want to speak to that, please?
Just briefly, the administration of the Office of the Courts is offering money for courtrooms to improve, not just courtrooms, but courthouses, buildings that house actual just court proceedings, to improve their security. In doing so, they've sent out a grant request, wanted people to apply. We have prioritized a couple of things that are most important over there. As you all know, we had an incident in this courthouse just after we moved over to the new courthouse, or the Justice Center, where a gentleman drove through the courthouse front, and there was blocks here enough that prevented tremendous damage, but there isn't anything over there. And we've applied as our first priority, a couple of those security planners, excuse, four of those security planners, about $4,000. Would, I'd love as a second priority for them to add on some closed caption TV.
Mary.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion carries. Next up is the Consideration of Southern Health Partners Agreement. I don't think we have an option other than to just adopt it, do we?
There is an additional, I think it's a 3% inflation, there wasn't one last year. We've had a increase to $1.30 per diem, and a little bit of an increase on their based annual fee, it's gonna run through October of 18. Unless you gave them notice, 60 days ahead of time, that you simply didn't want to fool with them any longer at Southern Health Partners, this is what you get. Now, you can, if you decide to go with somebody else, you look at other options, you have to give them a 60-day notice of termination, but this is just gonna roll over, doesn't modify anything else within the contract, just says, hey, this is a little bit of an increase. And I think y'all may have taken this up at the jail committee, I'm not sure.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion?
I do. You know, we budgeted $250,000 for this medical line item. When you take what we're gonna pay Southern Health Partners out of that, we only have $115,000 for the medical for the entire year. So make sure you know that, you know, it's gonna, it's not gonna make it on $115,000. So this was about a $25,000 increase, Marcia? Or $20,000 or something like that, above last year? So, and then another question I have is that, you know, we had a nurse to quit, they hired one, and then she didn't even show up for a day or two, so has that been fixed? Do we know?
Yes, that was fixed, actually. Sheriff Reagan was able to negotiate outside of the boundaries of this contract. Essentially, the contract says they'll send you whoever they're gonna send you, and you like it or not. But he sat down and talked with them after the nurse who they hired was there for her training period of, what, five days, and then didn't return without notice. But they immediately sent in a fantastic nurse, who was over there for a couple of weeks, and who actually trained in the new nurse. But they gave our sheriff a little bit of input on hiring of a new person, because we didn't want somebody who was gonna do this again. And so people submitted some applications, and they let him go over them with him, or with them, rather, at Southern Health Partners, so it'd be somebody we knew what we could trust. And their gentleman has stayed and done the training over there the last couple of weeks, and I don't think there's been any issues other than that very first day. And Larry, if I'm looking at the contract from 1017 of 16, I think it was.
120.
100 and, the 12-month annualized price at that time for 160 inmates was $130,569.36, and that was at $1.26 per inmate.
An increase of around 4,000 then.
Yeah.
4 cents, 4 cents per diem.
That's without the $1.30 for over 160 inmates as well.
Yeah, per diem's gone up 24 cents, and then it's gone, the base annual fee has gone up.
Last year of that line item, we spent $316,000.
I have a question. I think Wade had made this suggestion, and just wanted to follow up, like, you know, a lot of times they have utilized the emergency room for after-hours care, and we had asked that maybe they look into priority care to try to save money. Do you know if they've done that?
I do not. Of course, they close at 8, so it'd have to be anything before. If an ambulance takes them, they have to take them to the hospital.
They have to take them to the hospital.
But if a patrolman can take them, then I think that we can go basically where we want to, is that right, Wade?
If there's a doctor's office or an emergency care center open that's not particularly the emergency room.
So we need to make sure the sheriff knows that he can do that, and we probably need to get something set up with them to.
I think it's worth looking into, because I think that could save us quite a bit over an emergency room fee.
It'd be $85 for that visit versus what an emergency room visit is, it'd save a bunch.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the Southern Health Partners Agreement. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Again.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Good, motion passes. Next on the agenda, consideration of approval of the ambulance service roof proposals. We had the bid opening last Friday, and we have two bids. One from GNS Home Improvement, Option A, standing seam, $74,600, and Option B, shingles, $32,800. The other bid was from Turner Roofing out of Crossville. Option A for the standing seam was $72,000, and Option B for shingles, $25,000. What are your wishes?
Move to go with Option B with Turner Roofing, the shingles, for $25,000.
Okay, I have a motion to go with Turner Roofing, Option B, shingles, the shingles option for $25,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine four one absent, motion carries. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval of the ambulance remount proposals. And for those, we had, at the October 16th opening at 1:00 PM, the Finance Department, we had two bids, Select Tech, first bid of $67,400, and the bid number two was from Emergency Equipment Professionals, an amount of $97,753.72.
Move that we accept bid number one, Select Tech, for $67,400.
Motion to, give the bid to Select Tech, $67,400, and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes, nine four one absent. Number 17, consideration of the following budget amendments. Marcia, we got one for the senior center and one for the library.
The senior center is the normal, I normally do these quarterly, for the fundraising fees they've taken in, need to be transferred to their budget.
Moving to approve. I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Jim.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Joe.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine four one absent, the motion carries, and a second one, Marcia, for the library.
Okay, some years back, the Pinkley's, Pinkley Foundation donated a large sum of money to the library. It is not part of their county budget. The library board is able to decide when and how much they can use, so they have agreed to this amount on the budget amendment of $9,316.21 to be used by the library. So we need to transfer this money into their budget so that we can make a payment.
Okay, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jacquet.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Motion carries. Under any other business, Larry, we've got some good news, bad news, I guess, with the FEMA grants that the county has applied for, as well as the CDBG grants.
Yeah, the, we had allowed the Fentress County Fire Department to apply for two Assistant to Firefighter Grants through the federal government. We since found that we did not get those this year, and we're gonna try to reapply next year, those are very hard to get. On a positive note, the City of Jamestown and the City of Allard actually applied for two CDBG grants, which is Community Block Development Grants. The city applied for a half a million dollars for sewer, I believe.
Sewer, yes.
And the City of Allard actually applied for a tanker truck for $251,000, and both were awarded $751,000.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, last year, the state awarded about 60-something CDBG grants, and this year was maybe what, 38?
38.
38 CDBG grants across the state.
She said it was very competitive this year, that they normally try to fund 60, this year they only funded 38.
And Fentress County is the recipient of two of them.
Two of them, yes.
So we're very pleased with that. City of Jamestown's $500,000 sewer grant, and Allen Fire Department or City of Allen, $250,000, or $51,000 for new pumper truck.
That is correct.
All right, great news. Any other business to come before this board?
I got one thing. Mayor Davis came over and spoke with us about a project that the city is trying to undertake for the community and the county, and, you know, for the kids to help promote Christmas or something of that nature. They came up with some plans that they're working on and projected cost. Original cost was somewhere around $28,000, but I think they've been able to get some sponsors so far to get it down to about $21,000, and she had asked for something that we could do. I believe that it would be a good contribution for the county to, and I'll make this in a form of a motion, that we contribute $5,000 to the project.
I have a motion to approve $5,000 for the joint city-county Christmas program, and that would be something that is, the day of the parade, December 2nd, I think.
Yes.
Parade is 10 o'clock, and then this program would begin 11:00, and utilize city and the county resources, the back of the courthouse for a music venue, parade of trees around the courthouse itself, the lighting of the Christmas tree in the Mark Twain Park, some reading programs and Santa and picture things for the children of the county, vendors, arts and crafts, and food vendors, and things to make a big event, so. Still, still kind of in the process of going, but a big event, and I applaud Mayor Davis for her vision and her energy and involvement. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to add one more thing.
Where's the money coming from?
54310-790 will be out of some of the proceeds that we set up to pay for those two grants that we didn't get. It's money already budgeted.
Any other discussion?
What line are you putting it in?
Oh, County miscellaneous?
There's a couple in their contribution lines.
I'm worried about the taking it out of. 58500-316.
What was the amount?
5,000.
5,000?
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jacquet.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Jim.
Against.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Eight, four, one, absent.
Eight, four, one, absent, one against, motion passes. Anything else to bring before this commission? Yes, sir.
Claude Sewell, I would like to ask, who sets the rates for the Fentress County ambulance service?
Medicare, maybe?
Medicare sets the contract rates for the actual, what they'll pay and what they'll allow you to...
No, I'm, what they charge, what I'm referring to, Leslie.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Medicare tells you what you can charge and what you can't charge typically.
They tell the ambulance service what they can charge?
Typically, yes. Medicare tells you what you're allowed to bill for a run, and you have to be, it's based on a competitive rate for your reach, I think is how they come up with that.
Well...
It's not arbitrary.
I had the misfortune of having to pay something the other day. I called the company that takes care of the billing now, I don't think they take care of that at the ambulance service anymore, am I right?
You're correct.
And the lady told me it was 460 bucks if they go out the door. Now, going from the nursing home to the ER, 460 bucks plus $21.10 a mile, I believe it is, sounds to me like a little bit much. I know that's an expensive operation to run, I realize that, but 460 bucks for two miles? Well, actually, it's not two miles.
Mr. Sewell, I will get with Michael Paul Beatty, our ambulance director, and we'll discuss that and see exactly...
I know people will say, well, Medicare paid up most of that, that's just our tax money, how we still pay it? I mean, Medicare don't have a gold mine someplace where they're getting all their money, it comes out of our pockets. Don?
Well, I agree with you, something's gotta be wrong over there, because my mom was over there. Now, if you're ambulatory, that's one thing they gotta put you on the stretcher, but when you're in a wheelchair, and you gotta go back four of your front door, and they won't let you push them over there without you riding an ambulance, something wrong with the system. I grant you, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. Anything else?
How much money's left in that fund, Larry, that... that we just spent?
36928.
We probably ought to move it so it doesn't get away from us, in the county general fund. Can we do that?
Marcia can just do that, it's not payroll.
But I mean, you need to go ahead and pass that amendment to move it out of that line into...
You wanna put it all in that contribution line item that we have in a different budget?
No.
That's our budget, though.
It'd be gone to medical expense here in just a few months.
I'm sure it will.
Whoever should put it in.
You wanna put it in capital outlay?
How about county budgets?
Capital outlay?
It'd be a good place to put it, wouldn't it?
Is that, is that your wishes?
No, we're talking about it.
Mr. Guru?
I'm looking for it. Take it from, let me find my number again here, 54310-790 to 58900-799.
Is it capital outlay?
Yes. I'm gonna verify that.
And that's in the amount of, Larry?
Is that your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Jeff just made that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jacquet.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Motion passes, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Done.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally-owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.